La junta del Consilio de la Ciudad de Socorro, San José. Caballeros favoritos que están en las fachadas, sombreros, y todos los favoritos poner sus personas en silencio y cualquier tipo de electrónico. No solo acudarán a ningún tipo de comportamiento que, que, tan, por el policía, o relatos. A quien no siga esta duras, se le sacará y va a ser infraval.
Six o'clock, meeting is now called to order. Mr. Casano, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum.
Rene Rodriguez.
Here.
Sister Nevares.
Here.
Ralph Turan.
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia.
Here.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Here.
May we have a quorum? Can we have two speakers for public? Manuel Saldana. Mr. Saldana, you have three minutes.
Buenas tardes a todos los del Consilio. Quisiera comenzar con un versículo bíblico que dice de Mateo 23:12, "Porque el que se enaltece será humillado y el que se humilla será enaltecido." Quisiera decir las siguientes palabras, "La autoridad es palabra de poder y responsabilidad."
I'm sorry, one more, excuse me, I apologize. I cannot hear him with that echo going on. I don't understand a word he's saying. We don't have an IT guy here? I apologize. No les entendemos nada.
Bueno. Dice la, las siguientes palabras, "La autoridad es palabra de poder y responsabilidad." En ella encontramos un balance a los valores moral y ética de la ciudadanía. Pero en ella encontramos la ética, la moral, y los valores del gobierno que nos dirige. Somos una sociedad en la cual hemos sido golpeados duramente durante los últimos veinte años por la corrupción que hoy sabemos que existe en la Ciudad de Socorro. Y digo existe, y no porque ustedes sean parte de la corrupción, pero porque es parte de un gobierno que no ha luchado y no ha trascendido en el poder de su responsabilidad para la ciudadanía. Nos hemos encontrado con desafíos, nos hemos encontrado con palabras deshonestas, mentiras, promesas no cumplidas, y en ellos hemos visto que la ciudadanía sigue siendo golpeada por las palabras de un gobierno que no cumple. El poder no es simplemente el llegar a una silla o una mesa. El poder es saber llevarla a cabo con responsabilidad, con amor y con dedicación a la ciudadanía, ya que ustedes tienen el poder de hacer un cambio verdadero en nuestra ciudad. Día y noche oro por ustedes y le ruego al Señor que les dé sabiduría y les permite humillarse cuando a veces se encuentran ustedes mal en su opinión, pero también que la ciudadanía respete la autoridad y la ley conforme está escrita. Nosotros somos parte de esta ley, nosotros somos parte de la ciudad. Y yo como ciudadano de esta Ciudad de Socorro que amo con mi corazón, quisiera exhortarles a que de verdad consideraran a la familia, a la ciudadanía, a las personas, no sus intereses propios, pero sí el interés de un cambio verdadero. Un cambio que sea existente para todos por igual, no un cambio que sea para unos, para los que tienen más, sino para los marginados, para los que no tienen, para nuestros inmigrantes que existen en nuestra ciudad y que hacen esta ciudad grande. No hemos avanzado como Ciudad de Horizon, no hemos avanzado como Ciudad de Clinton, y nos hemos quedado en un hoyo, porque nuestros gobernantes no han sido posible que no han llegado a un acuerdo y a una unidad como una totalidad. No son uno cada uno, no representan al distrito uno, dos, tres, o cuatro, representan a toda una ciudadanía. Representan a esta ciudad.
Señor Saldana, se le terminó su tiempo.
Y continuaré ahorita que me den más tiempo. Gracias.
Rick Avalos. Mr. Avalos, you have three minutes.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council, and city officials. The last time we had contact with the city, it was unfortunately through our legal team, with your legal team, and it was to stop the process to take our homes without compensation for it. And furthermore, not only take our homes, but then under threat for the city to put a lien against our families so that we would pay for the own destruction of our homes. This with the idea that the city would be using our land for public use. So it's unfortunate that we came to that. But I'm here tonight to speak about that and then to ask the city officials and the city government here to rethink your position and to open your hearts and your minds to something new. So what I'd like to do tonight is to remind the city council, first and foremost, of the situation as to why we're flooding. We're flooding because the water comes to us from Horizon City. And due to negligence of landowners and negligence of other government entities, the levees that used to protect the people of Socorro in the Coker area no longer exist or badly damaged. And so therefore, we are not, we are not the ones who built in the flood zone. Our area became a flood zone, which makes why it's more of an injustice to take the land from us without compensation. Unfortunately, that was the action of the city. There was no other action but to decide, we're gonna take advantage of people who don't have the means or the education to fight. Through the glory of God, we were able to get a legal team that defended us. So with that being said, I'd like to remind you a little bit of your positions, the positions of power that you have, and why all of you, from everybody, from elected officials down to the police officers here, are in the positions that you are. Romans 13:1 says, "Let every soul should be subject to governing authorities, for there is no authority except for God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." Whether you continue a policy of injustice and malice towards the families of Coker Street or do what is right by us, which I hope, I pray that you do, in the end, our Father will be glorified and you will have to answer to Him for the actions or inactions that you take tonight and every time you decide something on the council. With that in mind, please know that you are there because God appointed you to that position. He entrusted you to be there, to do right by His people, not to take advantage of those who cannot defend themselves. Here's a faithful reminder of what the Lord calls us to do, but more so, you guys are in a position of power to help glorify His name, to make His actions bigger. Zechariah 7:10 says, "Do not oppress the widow, the fatherless, the foreigners, or the poor, and let none of you devise evil against the other in your heart." Psalm 82, verses 3 through 4 says, "Give justice to the weak and the fatherless. Maintain the rights of the afflicted and the destitute, and rescue the weak and the needy. Deliver them from the hand of the wicked." And lastly, Jeremiah 22:16 says, "He judged the cause of the poor and the needy, and it was well..." It's not this note to declare me, says the Lord. Thank you for your time, City Council. Thank you, city officials and Madam Mayor, and regardless of how you decide to vote, you're in my prayers and in my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ferny Salcido. Mr. Salcido, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, city officials. I'm speaking in behalf of the Rancho Medivale Estates for the Vista Bonita. We are working on that development agreement, and I don't know if you all have had a chance to look at it, the most recent one that they returned. We had talked about getting a six-foot rock wall on our backyards in order for the new easement on the extension of Anderson Road. The way it came back out is a developer's contribution includes a payment of $34,510 for a construction of the 2,000 linear foot rock wall. Well, that's not even half. The going rate is around ninety per porch, and we're talking times six, so we're talking an average, and I just did some figures really quick, of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. So they're coming in with the just half. I'm wondering, is the city in a position to come out with additional thirty-five thousand just for the rock wall, or do we still need to try and negotiate this for whenever we vote on it? It seems like they have the upper hand and they're trying to manipulate not only us, the citizens, but council as well. We will discuss this a little further down the road. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Item number five, presentation by Texas A&amp;M Colonias Program regarding IRT Community Clinic Recap.
Can we delete the item? No one showed up to...
Make a motion to delete.
To do the presentation. Section.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Yes. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move up items eighteen and nineteen. Does anybody have any other items we'd like to move up?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action on installation of a street light only in front of 11437 Bakersfield Road.
Do we have any speakers on this item?
No ma'am.
No? I, I'd like to apologize for not being here a few minutes earlier. I was stuck in traffic, number one. I do have the gentleman that lives at this address, and this is his first time here and he probably did not know he had to sign up in order to speak for this item. So I'd like for him to be able to speak for this item if he wishes. Can we suspend the rule?
Make the motion?
Second.
I make the motion to suspend the rule, to allow this gentleman to speak for three minutes.
Aye.
Sister Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Yes.
Señor, si puede venir a hablar aquí al, para hacer la luz.
Let him know he has two minutes. One minute, okay.
Buenas tardes, caballeros, y además...
Buenas tardes.
Yo vengo aquí a solicitar...
Señor, ¿nos puede dar su nombre, por favor? Su nombre, por favor.
José Samaniego, asesor. La razón por la cual yo vengo aquí, vengo a solicitar lo que le llaman un streetlight. Ese lo solicité hace ocho años. Yo tengo nueve viviendo ahí en esa casa. Y nunca me dieron respuesta hasta ahora que la señorita Ivonne Colón me hizo caso. Fue hasta mi casa a ver el problema, por eso es lo que estoy aquí, y gracias a ella. Ojalá se logre. Pero según ella tiene, tiene que aprobar el City Council para poner esa luz. Pero yo le dije, yo pongo la luz, yo la dono, nomás que la instalen. Tan fácil así está. Yo se les pongo muy fácil. Eso es todo lo que tengo que decir sobre la luz.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Can I ask him a question? Usted dijo que usted la compra y usted la...
Yo ya tengo la luz. Ahí la tengo nuevecita en una caja.
Okay.
Nomás que la instalen.
Y, y dónde quiere que la installemos?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Samaniego has a light, I have not seen it. He generously wanting, wanting to donate it. The poles there, the, the light would go in front of the speed bump where he wants the light to go. And that, the, the purpose for this light would service the middle area of Bakersfield.
It's in a right-of-way? The pole?
I'm sorry?
Is the pole in a right-of-way? That's what I was gonna ask him.
Well, it's a, it's an electric, electric pole.
Yeah, but it's, it's in the street, right?
Yes. It belongs to the electric company.
I think we need to get the electric company to let us know if that's possible before we proceed.
Why? And I was gonna, I was gonna say that. So, the purpose for this light would serve, the poles already there, as a matter of fact, there's two poles, right? They're already there. It would serve, you could see the speed pump at night because you can't see it right now. Number one. Number two, the Bakersfield has a light at the beginning of the street and at the end of the street and no light in the middle.
No in the middle.
So it would serve several purposes. And, and this is why I decided to bring this. And, and I didn't tell the gentleman at the time that most likely the electric company might not accept your light, but we don't know that. So, at this time, we would need the light and the handle that holds the light.
That holds the light, okay. We could, we could, Ms. Villalos, we could instruct admin to take care of that situation because it's not our pole. Every time that we wanted to put a light, we have to ask their permission because that's their pole. So we can't just go in and just plug something in, but we can certainly let our administration handle that portion of it. It's fine. It's a good thing that she brought it up so we'll know what the intent was, you know? Eight years ago was a long time to be waiting for a pole. But you know what? We could just address it in-house and let them take care of it because that is their pole. And if they need to change it or, or it's not adequate for what they use, you know, let, let administration do it. And we'll just bring it in.
So do you wanna make the motion for, for us?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to direct our staff to look into the situation, to... We can't install it because we need to get permission before we could install. No, it's, it's an elect, it's, it's out there.
But if he's the one donating, he can't make those arrangements, he would have to... If you would not call there and just coordinate the installation.
Okay, well, do what it... Go, go with the gentleman, see what he needs, give him the right information. If they come back, they says, hey, he is not able to, then we'll...
Okay, so I told that Ariana, that he was the, I think he was the doctor? And he wanted to install his light and he asked to donate. He can't consult with him.
I know. Send them to the right people, that's what I'm saying. Yes. And if they do not accept his light, for whatever reason or whatever, then handle it from there and, and see what we can do.
Mr. Nevares.
It's providing direction.
Yes.
That's what we need. Okay? All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action on the appointment of David Estrada to the Planning and Zoning Commission Place Four.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Yes.
Hi, David Estrada. Do solemn swear in the firm that I have not directed and directed, paid, offered, promised to pay or contribute, or promised to contribute? Any money or thing of value? Or public, or promise any public employment? As a reward to secure? My appointment or confirmation thereof? Hi, David Estrada. Do solemn swear affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Socorro, Texas? And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the State.
No, he's, he doesn't need the training. He's already in your commission.
Going back to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Yes.
Item number eight, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of ordinance 423, amendment two, to increase fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget in the amount of seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
The public hearing.
Oh! Hold on, nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Isn't it first reading?
Your second?
The reason for the amendment is we just approved the water irrigation district, the a hundred and nine thousand dollar payment. So we kinda moved money around in order to, and we need a increase in by seventy-nine, seventy-six thousand.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent. Ivan Colom Villalos.
Give me a second, okay. Yes.
Item number nine, discussion and action on fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget for all City of Socorro departments including revenue projections for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Madam Mayor, City Council, what you have before you is a new iteration of what we discussed the last time when we had a budget workshop. And just to go over some of the assumptions that we looked at last time and some of the highlights. First of all, our assumption is we're recommending the rollback rate, and that's what we base the revenue assumption for the property taxes on. The rollback rate is point seven-three-seven-one-two-two. It's basically a whole penny increase from what we currently have. We're also looking at a possible two percent proposed cost of living adjustment, which is consistent with the social security cost of living for employees that was recently published. Just to keep in mind, we do have merit raise increases that are possible, and they are included in the budget as is. We are pending still some information from some of our benefits for our employees. We've heard numbers as big as ten percent. A number of ten percent that would increase our, our health insurance mostly is ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. That would be the, the ten percent of that number. Now, keep in mind that we have nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars budgeted for that, and it's an increase from last year. And the, the increase from last year is including the city council, health insurance numbers, and we have a new employee through the grant writer. And those increases in numbers of employees is what is that increase from last year to this year. We're also looking at getting a city auditor, a standalone position in the amount of about fifty-eight thousand, one hundred, which would include benefits, it'd be salary and benefits, and this position would report to the city manager. Again, if you look down the page to Public Works, we have the various wish list items. Given the priority, the, the first item is actually the third priority. The sign-making machine is the fourth priority. The weed tractors, that's two of them, would be the first priority at fifty thousand. And the ATV pesticide machine would be the second priority. And then the four, four-wheel drive trucks, two of them, would be the, the last priority and could wait either for a, a capital campaign or for the next year's maintenance and operations. We're also looking at an increase in the street maintenance. To the last few years, we've way under budgeted and we're trying to get that into the budget this year at sixty-five thousand, an increase of thirty thousand over the prior year. Next is the, the police department indicating their wish list, a total of about just over eighty thousand dollars. Their first priority is to get these vests that they have indicated that they need. Next is the radios, which is their, basically their last priority on this list. And the voice recording would be the second priority. And then the headsets, that amount could be incorporated into the budget or through a budget amendment. It's, it's really immaterial at this point. We are pending some maybe changes in the staff of the police department, and at this point, we're thinking it'd be, it would be best that the, the, the new police chief make some of these decisions after they've had an opportunity to, to look at what we have and, and where we need to go.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Casano.
Yes, sir.
So on the police department?
Yes.
You're asking us that, in your opinion, is to wait to see what they really want with the police, with the new police coming in, or...
No, there, there are, there's some particular changes that were recommended by, by the, the police department as is, increasing to have two lieutenants instead of one and adding a sergeant.
But none of these, not, not, we're not talking about the, the vest, the radios, the voice recording.
No.
Okay, it's a dish, okay.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to...
Mr. Casano.
Yes.
Do you know in their, I'm sorry.
Mayor.
I apologize. Do you know, I, I know you said radios, is there, do they not have radios now or they need to be replaced?
No, the, these are specific radios that they're asking for. They do have radios, but these are, you know, higher-end, you know, stuff. Stuff, stuff that, you know, this is again, this is a wish list. This is not necessarily that they gotta have it tomorrow.
And to add to that, the last time I remember in council where we gave them some radios was like in 2013, 2014. So equipment does go out of date. I'm just saying.
And the reason I ask is, I, I believe they're very important for protection and for safety and for whatnot, so...
Absolutely.
And vests, do they wear vests now? Do they have vests now?
They have vests, these are specific vests. I don't know if chief wants to talk to you specifically about those vests, but they, they, they have a, a specific, you know, use.
For active, active shooting.
Mayor, Council, these vests are ballistic-type vests that you would wear during an active shooter, critical incident where there's a person with a gun, a rifle, and that gives our officers another protection, and when they go on the calls, they can just put them on real quick, handle the situations, and know that they're gonna be safe from two, two, three rounds, which are those long rifle-type rounds with the assault rifle-type rounds. And it gives another layer of protection as opposed to our vest that we wear underneath.
Do you know if there's any funds for this?
We've put in some funds, but they go pretty quickly. Again, so many departments across the nation, and we, the funding usually comes from the federal government for these type of funds, so it's first-come, first-served basis, and usually it's based on the, the need of the area that you're at, as well as sometimes there's match costs and things like that.
We put in through the fire, firehouse sub, they, they give about twenty-five thousand, up to twenty-five thousand purchase safety goodness. Our grant, our acting grant coordinator went ahead and put in for that grant for us, but we're not going to find out for about a year and a half if we even qualify for it.
Thank you.
Because usually the major cities are the ones that qualify for or get, get these grants awarded to them.
That's unfortunate, but thank you.
Well, keep in mind, though, the, the funding for it is right here, right now. I mean, we could afford to get these if we want to. If that's what you decide, we need those, it, it's there, we can fund it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we reclassified some items on the municipal court to, to allow for some travel and seminars so that the, the city clerk can become certified. We did some changes in planning and zoning in the personnel, but, you know, the bottom line didn't change that much. I'm sorry, in, in the municipal court, there, the travel and seminars were switched. The, the understanding of what, what goes where was, was a little off, so we corrected that. And then the city clerk, we have the, the registration and travel required for the certification included in the budget. The recreation centers actually went down, be, because of, last year they were funded, they had a wish list, and we, we bought a bunch of equipment, mainly a, a very, very big stage, I think we used it at the, at the, you know, opening of Nuevo Wico Tanks Road, that stage is, is, I believe ours, is that right? It's ours, okay. All right. And, the grants, it's important to know that, that we have funded and employed for the grants coming, for this coming fiscal year, instead of just having a, a service contract or an independent contractor do that for us. That's page one. The next page, it says at the top, it says, City of Socorro, Historical and Fund Balance Projections, Unrestricted Fund Balance Analysis. That's, that's accounting speak for reserves. This is what I'm showing as our reserves that we, we should, should be able to tap into for this coming fiscal year. And now, the way the, the budget reads right now, we have a reserve, we're going to use up reserves of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand of that one million eight, leaving us total unrestricted reserves of a million. Now, included in this, this analysis, it's also important to know that the commitments, where it says minimum fund balance, that's two months' worth, that's one point five, that's just, just set aside for an emergency, and we're not tapping into that number, okay? The third page is an analysis of the, the tax rates that we're, we're looking at. Again, we're looking at using the rollback rate. Unfortunately, the rollback rate only gives us a net increase over the current rate, using the current values that we're looking at, and that's a billion dollars of taxable value that we can tap into on the property tax, and that, that total increase is, is under a hundred thousand dollars. So we're not, we're not talking about a huge increase by going to the rollback rate. And that's our recommendation, is to use the rollback rate. If it gets too exciting, you just let me know, I can go a little quicker. On page one?
Do it.
We're showing the revenues that are in the general fund or the maintenance and operations, and highlighted there near the bottom is the prior year's reserve. One of the things I, I, I need to do as soon as I'm able is to show you how the actual numbers for fiscal year two thousand seventeen fit into this, this situation. You know, I'll put in a column and it'll say, Actual Fiscal Year End Two Thousand Seventeen, and show you those numbers, you know, because even though we budgeted to use up reserves of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, we actually had an increase in reserves of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And that's, hopefully you've, you've, I'm sure you, you went home last week, and you just, the first thing you did when you got home was to print the financial statements that they sent us, and you looked at that and saw, oh, man, that's, that's not bad. On page two is the debt service. Again, we're going to show revenue of what we need to pay, and that's going to be one million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to, to pay, to do the debt service for this next fiscal year. On the special revenues, our, our grant, our interim grant writer gave me a lot of information as to what, what we have that's, that's pending out there that we can include in next year's budget. And what we do with the special revenues, whatever we say is going to come in, we're going to say that it's going to go out. So, we're, we're saying we're going to get in about half a million dollars, and we're going to pay out about a half a million dollars. A lot of it is reimbursements for overtime, and, and for, we, we're, we have budgeted eighty-four thousand dollars for another bus, and, and some other revenues, but whatever we're going to bring in, we're going to pay out. And then, in the capital, capital projects, we're just showing an estimate of what's going to be left in the capital for the, the COs for two thousand fourteen, going into this next fiscal year. On page, I hope it's five. Five? Yes, page five. I'm sorry, I apologize for the font, but I try, I wanted it to be on one page so you could see the totals and, and how they relate to one another. I think it's important to know that when you run in, when you run a city, you're running people, you know, because the, the balance of the total personnel costs is just over six million dollars, and that represents sixty-four percent of the total budget. So when you're running a city, it's, it's very typical to run from anywhere from sixty-five to as high as seventy-five percent personnel cost when you run a city. The city manager's budget, just as a reminder, because we're going from four seventy-three to six seventeen, it's important to note that we included over a hundred thousand dollars for that licensing fee that we approved at the last meeting to be paid out. We already paid it out for, for this current fiscal year that we're in, and we're including in, in the next budget, and that's why it's significantly higher than last year. In our IT budget, we're including an additional amount for service contracts as, as we have a, kind of a full year with, with our current IT person, we're, we're getting very close to, to showing the reality on our budget, what it takes to, to, to operate properly. And in, in order to do that, we're going to need an increase of about twenty-seven thousand I think last time, there was a question regarding building and property maintenance, and we did have, we have an increase shown in there because during this current fiscal year, we've had to increase that amount for some, some repairs and some other issues that we had early in the fiscal year on, on some of our buildings and some of the structures that we have out there. And, you know, that's, that's, that's something we can, we can revisit and maybe put some restrictions on, but as it is, we're, we're looking at increasing that amount. We are decreasing the service contracts, you know, last fiscal year, we had the brilliant idea of having a weed squad and including about eighty thousand for some service contracts to take care of that. We've had some negotiations with some, some entities that do that kind of work, and we were actually able to do it for much cheaper. And so that's why we're, we're showing a, a decrease from a hundred and seventeen thousand to seventy thousand for service contracts. On the police, we're actually showing an overall decrease. Last year, the, for that, for the fiscal year that we're in, we had set aside a hundred and sixty-six thousand for equipment, included in that is five vehicles, and we're still hoping to get the, the rest of those, and hopefully we'll get it into this fiscal year. And we, we have not budgeted as much, thinking that if needed, we would either lease or buy them through a, a capital project. On planning and zoning, we've actually decreased, again, it has to do mainly with the property and equipment. Last year, we spent a lot of money for the Exela, is it called? Exela Program, and we had it budgeted there, and we're not going to have those same expenditures this year, or for the next fiscal year. We're showing on page twenty-seven, the health contract, we're just leaving it at the six hundred thousand dollar mark. If you look on page twenty-nine, you can see the difference between last year and this year. Last year, we have no personnel costs, this year we do, and we, we also have the operational costs, but overall, the budget's going down from one, from one twenty-four to one oh On the human resources, on page thirty-one, the budget decreased, mostly because in the past, we've had a, a nice set aside for legal fees because of the personnel situation. We don't have the same pending situation coming forward with this next fiscal year, hopefully, and so we're only budgeting thirty thousand instead of seventy-five. Don't tell our lawyer. For city council, we're actually increasing a little over thirty thousand, even though we're removing thirty thousand, because we had in there a, a, a budget item for service contracts of thirty thousand to, to use an independent contractor to do some internal audit procedures. But since we didn't have an audit committee, it would be, it doesn't make sense to do that. And so we've moved, removed that, and we're, we're trying, we're going to put that underneath the, the city manager, and have the city manager hire a city auditor to hopefully do some of the things that, that, as you recall during the, the meeting or the discussion by our auditor, there were some of the, some things that he had brought up that we need to shore up and do better, and three or four of those things could be done by a city auditor and have that person help us with some of our internal controls, but also with doing in fixed asset inventory and some other things that, that we have, that we'd like to have done. Also, please note that the health insurance premiums are shown in full for six people on, on that line item for fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. The city clerk, since we're not having an election this coming fiscal year, hopefully, we don't, we're saving twenty-three thousand dollars on the, on the budget for that election. In the finance department, there's, there's a problem there, but it's in the deferred compensation. Somebody that works in the finance department takes full advantage, as should all our employees of our deferred compensation program, and in order to get that budgeted properly, I had to increase it by about four thousand dollars. And then, and then I'm nickel and diming you the rest of the way down, a couple of thousand here and there. The recreation centers is actually decreasing their budget. They had the perfect budget last year of four hundred and ninety-one thousand even. I like that, all those zeros, and we're reducing it to four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Last year, they had set aside fifty-two thousand dollars for equipment, this year only fifteen. Again, we bought some, we bought the stage and some other stuff where, that we use, and is good to have for ourselves. On page forty-six is the debt service, it's just whatever we're going to bring in, we're going to pay out on the debt service, on, again, a million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand. It's broken down by interest charges and principal payments, so we're going to reduce our debt, our, our bottom line debt by a million dollars next fiscal year. Special revenues is kind of the same thing, what we're going to show, come in, we're going to show going out, and then the same thing for the capital projects, about one point one million that we're going to spend of what's left in our COs for two thousand fourteen. Are there any, any other questions? None of those hand signals were for me, right? Okay, just checking.
Thank you so much, that was very informative.
Mayor?
Mr. Casiano?
Um, if we don't make any motions or we don't make any suggestions, then we just leave it as is, where staff is thinking of just putting everything in for the budget, correct?
Correct. Right now, that's what we're presenting, is our needs. If you don't provide us any direction, this same budget will continue to be presented to you all until you give us different direction.
Okay.
Do we move on? Anybody have any suggestions?
No, I think, I think it's, it's, it's good so far.
Do they have?
No. If you have any suggestions?
I'm just, there's a note, we won't have another budget meeting until we adopt it. So if you want us to take a different direction, now's the time.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Duran?
Mr. Casiano, versus how much money we're bringing in versus how much money we're going to spend next year, is there a difference?
How much we're bringing in?
How much money we, as a city, bring in versus how much money we're going to spend?
We're going to bring in a little bit more, a couple, three, couple hundred thousand dollars more. If we use the, well, even, even if we were to stay at the current tax rate, because of the increase in the, in the taxable value, we would be bringing in more money that way. So, you know, unfortunately, the rollback rate doesn't increase it that much, but just, just under a hundred thousand dollars. But, you know, last year, with the wish list and, and everything, we, we budgeted to tap into the reserves by one point one million. And this year, we're, we're looking to tap into the reserves much lower at eight hundred and twenty-six thousand.
So in other words, so to operate the city?
Uh-huh.
We're going to be tap, hitting the reserves again?
Yes. If, if we keep it as is, again, this is with the full wish list included, including the two percent COLA.
Okay, so could you give us a, a balanced budget?
We could give you a balanced budget, we would have to look at seeing where we could increase revenues, if, if possible, and, 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 you know, as accountants, we're very conservative, so on the revenue side, we're going to, we're going to shoot low, and on the expenditure side... And on the expenditure side, we're going to shoot high. So that, that, you know, at the end, it works out.
Last year, how much did we tap into the reserves?
When you say last year, which fiscal year are you talking?
Fiscal year, the previous fiscal year.
Fiscal year 2017?
Yes.
We budgeted at almost four-hundred thousand to tap into the reserves?
No, it's how much more did we spend than we brought in?
We actually brought in two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand more than what we spent.
Okay. Answer that question.
For, to, for comparison purposes, would it be possible to propose a budget with maybe half of the wish list and the current tax rate?
Give me a number and we will do it. The, the city manager is very adept at taking out the red pen and slashing things. It's, it's, it's not pretty, but it's effective.
Okay, and as a, I mean, I would want council's direction, right? Because we're telling you what our needs are. Tell me what you don't want to fund, so I can go out to every department and cut. I, I mean, we can cut every department's budget if there's services that you do not want to provide.
Ms. Ellos?
So basically, what Mr. Casiano was saying is, their wish lists are long and you narrowed it down to the most basic needed, needed, needed items.
Correct.
And that's what you're presenting to us today.
Yes. What we're actually needing.
Well, for an example, on public works, we included all of that two-hundred thousand dollars in, in the budget. If you decide we can wait on the trucks, that's ninety thousand dollars right there that we can reduce, that eight-hundred-and-twenty-six that we're taking out of the reserves.
Mr. Rodriguez?
You know, I don't, I don't believe, I don't know about anybody else. I don't believe that we should just gut it even at half because it, it, the city ain't going to be functioning that way. We worry about, about the budget and we're, we're trying to, you know, be penny pinchers. You know, and I'm like a broken record. You know, we're, we're talking about, you know, you want to, you want to cut the budget, slash the budget, not just cut it, slash it. On equipment that is needed for our personnel to do their jobs. You know, I, I, I didn't hear that mentality when we cost ten thousand dollars on a name change, did we? You see, where was that mentality today? You know? I mean, that's one of those things. Our personnel needs equipment to make this city beautiful, make it run smooth. We're not going to be slashing. I think that the thing that we should do is that ATV, instead of three, we can do two. We can do it with a four-by-four truck. That's ninety thousand dollars. We can do that. You know, but everything else, everything else here is, I mean, it's basically needs. Even though it's, it's under a, a, a wish list, those are basic needs.
Ms. Ellos?
And I, I somewhat agree with you, Mr. Rodriguez. But I also think that we, we should probably even talk to the personnel involved before we slash anything because, you know, we don't know really what their needs are. You know their needs, we don't know their needs. You put it down and you say, this is what we need. But before we go slashing anything, we need to talk to the proper people who are out there in the sun with non-working equipment, which is what we hear all the time, or outdated equipment, you know? And, and obviously, that, you know, when they're using that type of equipment, we're at risk with workman's comp and them being out of work and getting hurt, et cetera, et cetera. So we really need to sit down and talk to our people who are out there and, and, and let them know that we're here for them instead of just slashing and get, and then we lose good employees. We have great employees and then we start losing employees because we're not listening to them.
To add to your point.
Mr. Rodriguez?
The only reason, thank you, Mayor. The only reason why is because this truck, the public works says it can't wait for next budget. That's the only reason why we even looked at that. You know, even that comes from their recommendation. So, I mean, that's the only thing I'm saying. But I mean, when I look at this list, I mean, it's, I know it's wants and I know they're big ones, but, you know, it, it basically, I'm seen as needs. And we have to give them the proper equipment so that they can continue doing a great job. You know, without them and without the proper equipment, the jobs ain't going to be done.
Mr. Arata?
Just to add to that, I do sit with every department head and get their needs. Their needs is, are very long, something that's not doable for the city. So we sit as a combined department and say, okay, what, what are our actual needs and what's going to make a difference for the next day? The tractors for cutting weeds, that makes us be faster and more efficient. So those are, those are the purchases that we kind of want to do and they're not reoccurring every year. But, I mean, sitting with personnel, every, every department head sits with me and Mr. Casiano. However, we can't provide them every wish that they request. But, I mean, we do do that.
Mr. Arata?
I just need to set the record straight about the ten thousand dollars that keeps being pulled up every time that, you know, you get a chance to do it.
Jim, that's not, we're not posted for that, do we?
You spoke on it, so.
Yes, I did, but in reference to spending money.
And I'm spoke, speaking in reference to that. Thank you. Jim?
Make it quick.
I will make it quick. When we brought that item up.
With all due respect, I've been shut down for speaking out of term and I think we should stick to that plan on this.
Mayor gave me permission to speak. She told me to make it quick and I'm going to make it quick. I have the floor. I have the floor. She is the chairperson.
I completely understand. But we've been in that position before and I've not, have not been allowed to speak.
Well, I just was being given allowed the permission to speak. May I, may I continue?
Making, regarding the budget.
This is regarding the budget versus ten mil, ten thousand dollars that keeps being brought up that is, was in the last year's budget, okay? When we brought this item up, there was no, nobody said anything about what it would cost. And it was voted on by this council, I believe unanimously. Therefore, everybody has a part in that. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
That's a lie.
Excuse me, that's a personal attack, Mayor.
Don't interrupt me because I have the floor.
I have, I just made a motion. It's a personal attack. Thank you.
One at a time, please.
That's, it's not an attack. It's true.
Mr. Rodriguez, just stick to the item and the agenda of the budget.
That it's unanimous, that's fictitious and that's a lie because I did not vote for it. So it's not unanimous, okay? They get it straight. So know your policy and procedures and know that I'm speaking and I have the floor. So don't interrupt me, just like Mayor, stop me. Have the same decency and courtesy. For the record, it wasn't unanimous because I was opposed to it and I did not vote for it. So it is not unanimous, so therefore it is a fallacy.
Ms. Ellos?
Gentlemen. Gentlemen. That's fine. Listen, I'm on, I'm on nobody's side. I just wanted for us to stick to the rules. If I wasn't allowed to speak before, we shouldn't be allowed to speak now. That's all. You know, this, this thing going back and forth over these, these things, I, I believe today should be the day that we rest this item regarding. It's, it's, it's a done deal. It looks beautiful. And, you know, I just think we should rest it here. But the only thing I was just trying to say, not against anybody, this has nothing to. I've been stopped before from speaking, from our attorney, and that's not fair. We're going to, we're going to be fair, we're going to be fair with everybody today. Let's just wipe, wipe it clean and move forward. The, the citizens don't need to revisit this over and over.
I agree.
Thank you.
Item number ten, discussion on action to approve contract for Chief of Police Tommy Burke.
Make a motion to approve?
I second. The contract simulates the same one that Chief Maldonado, Carlos Maldonado had. We just added a section where it identifies that he, the, the new Chief of Police reports to the city manager and we report to council together. And we are offering an annual salary of ninety thousand dollars.
Renee Rodriguez?
Hi.
Sister Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez Saxon? Ivan Colombo Yelo?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Item number eleven, discussion on action on moving expenses for the Chief of Police from San Antonio to Socorro.
Make a motion to approve?
Do we have a second? We did get in contact with our candidate, Tommy Burke, and she provided us an estimate of the expense for her to move from San Antonio to Socorro. So that's what we are presenting to council.
Hi. Yes.
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 Mr. Rodriguez?
Could we move item seventeen up, please?
Second.
Hi. Yes.
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 Item number seventeen, discussion on action to direct staff to look into improvements on the Coker and Worsom Road area.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to look into possibilities, making like a soccer field slash pond when it, when it's off-season on that area and in vicinity as well. I think that for the past fifteen, twenty years, you know, this area has been devastated by increasing, you know, weather, especially the runoff coming out from the north. I think that we should move on this. I think that is the right thing to do. I think that we should, as council, have empathy. I've said it once and I keep saying it again. I mean, this is something that we have to help our constituents. So I want to make a motion to direct staff into looking into possibilities, acquiring the land for a possible soccer field or retaining pond, something for the public use.
I second that.
Manuel Saldaña?
Bueno, buenas tardes otra vez. Dicho lo anterior del principio, quisiera seguir con esto. Habiendo ya dicho lo que se dijo sobre la autoridad, quisiera demandar que en el caso de las familias de Cocker Road, ustedes buscaran siempre la mejor opción y bienestar de estas familias. No tomen decisiones arbitrarias ni consideran a las familias como la familia Gándara o la familia Murillo como exceptos de las decisiones gubernamentales y actuemos por parejo y no por estatus económico. Si van a tomar la decisión de desalojar, que sea conforme la ley, que está por encima de cualquier cuerpo gubernamental o de familia o amistad. De esta manera tendremos a una ciudadanía que confía en un concilio que trabaja para la ciudadanía. Como dijo Mr. Renee ahorita, necesitamos buscar una opción y estamos buscar una decisión porque las familias siempre están pensando que el día de mañana les van a quitar sus casas. Necesitamos llegar a un acuerdo que sea en beneficio de la ciudadanía, no el beneficio de la política ni del gobierno. Que sea lo que la ciudadanía quiere y requiere de nuestro cuerpo que gober, gobierna nuestra ciudad. Tenemos el derecho como ciudadanía de demandar, de exigir y ver resultados de ustedes hacia nosotros, no de nosotros hacia ustedes. Porque ustedes están ahí porque nosotros votamos por ustedes.
Señor Saldaña, se le terminó su tiempo.
Entonces, por esto les quiero decir, Dios les bendiga y que tomen una decisión de acuerdo a estas familias, por favor.
Recábalo.
Good afternoon again, Madam Mayor, City Council and City officials. With regard to the resolution that's been referred to by City Representative Rodriguez and second by City Representative Villalobos, I think that's a step in the right direction. That's a sign wanting to work with us and we thank you for that. Up until this point, our concern was that, and this is because of what has gone on prior with the city, that, thank God, there has not been a flood and thank God we have not been affected again. But the feeling has been that we were getting waited out by the city to get hit again and then doing inspection the following day or to go in and then remove us from our homes. I don't think that's wrong of us to think that considering the way we were approached before and what was wanted to be done with us. But with the current resolution at hand, I think that's a step in the right direction and we look forward to working with the city, whether it's through us or with our legal team. And just lastly, Matthew twenty-five forty reads, Akim will reply, truly I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me. Remember again, you were appointed by God to your position regardless of the campaign. He chose you to be there. Do his will and because of the position you're in, you can glorify him even more. Just keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Mayor, and for the record, Mr. Victor Perez arrived to the meeting at seven oh five.
I apologize, I lost track of time at work.
A los residentes de Coker, voy a hablar en español porque sé que todos hablan español ahí y hay unos que no hablan inglés. Les quiero decir con todo corazón que yo he tratado de ver qué es la mejor manera para, para ustedes, ustedes que viven ahí. Hemos hablado con los abogados y las cosas que nos han dicho quizás no son favorables a lo que ustedes necesitan oír o, o lo que ustedes necesitan. Por eso hemos, yo digo, voy a hablar por mí pero casi siento que la mayoría de aquí, a base de las reglas que nos han dado, que nos han dado hasta ahorita, hemos votado como hemos votado. Pero yo siempre he dicho, donde hay fe, se pueden mover montañas. Dios los va a poner donde los necesita y donde los va a proteger hasta ahorita. Pienso, no estoy segura, pienso que hay otros reglamentos que a lo mejor no hemos visto o que no nos han dicho porque es imposible saberlas todas y como las entrepeten puede ser diferente tanto como ustedes, tanto como nosotros. Entonces, créanme, créanme, que con cada junta, esta, con cada junta que hemos tenido, era para el bien de ustedes, el cien por ciento. Y Dios es mi testigo, que eso lo siento yo del corazón. No tenemos por qué quitarles sus casas nomás porque sí. No, no hay ni un beneficio. No hay, hay cero beneficio quitarles su casa. Pero sí hay un beneficio de protegerlos y eso es la responsabilidad de cada persona aquí arriba. Espero que Dios nos ilumine y que vengamos a un acuerdo que sea favorable para el bien de todos. Pero la mera verdad, no estamos contra ustedes. Yo quisieras regalarles casas, encontrarles alguien que les comprara un terreno y les pusiera una casa porque se ha visto eso, eh, en las televisiones, se ha visto. Pero a veces es imposible o a la, a lo mejor no hemos visto como persona. Yo no estoy hablando como, como mujer del consulado. Estoy viendo, estoy hablando de, de la persona que, que, que a lo mejor allá afuera, pues yo he hablado con varios constructores porque los conozco. ¿Y qué podemos hacer para ayudarles a ustedes? Nadie me regresó llamadas, nadie me regresó. En otras palabras, yo he hecho privadamente para ayudarles para que no, no se queden sin casa. ¿Sí me explico? Entonces, de todo corazón, les digo que espero que Dios los ponga donde los necesite y les asista, este, junto. Digo Dios porque Dios nos, es el instrumento que yo utilizo para que me ayude aquí en el consulado. Gracias.
All I want to know, all I want to say is, this is something that has been reoccurring. People don't want to talk about it. People don't want to say what really happens. Unfortunately, some of these residents bought. Unfortunately, some of these residents bought their home long before there was any law stipulating that people need to be know where they're buying their land, if they're under flood and stuff like that. Therefore, I believe that these people were, you know, misled when they bought these homes. I don't do it because it's the right thing to do or because we have empathy. I do it because it's the, well, I do that for those reasons. But one of the things is that, um, when it rains, I'm out there. When it rains, I'm out there. I have text messages, I have phone calls where I let our city manager know, hey, we got people out there over here in the north, it's okay. Oh, there's a lot coming, rain, runoff. You know, I'm out there. I'm out there raining, you know, it, it's, I'm, I'll always be out there because I'm afraid. Because in two thousand and thirteen, we pulled a lady out of her window because she was trapped in her own home. Thank God, nothing happened to that individual. You know, those are my concerns. You know, I don't want to strip people's homes because you know what? That's the American dream and you want to kill their dream? Because you want to use, you know, uh, some rules that we have in, in Board of Adjustment, I mean, in, um, uh, what's our, our, uh, the one that we use, our commission? The Buildings and Standards. We need to let our constituents know that we never used that before until this time. Because FEMA required us to go and, and survey your, your homes. We didn't do it intentionally, but that set up a red flag. And we had to do, as a city function, they had to assess the damage. They had to do it as administratively. Us as council, whether we don't see eye to eye in all of these items, you know, we have empathy, we have a heart. We understand that we need to do the right thing. You know, even if our commission is actively trying to do what is in the books and by the law, we also have to look at what's right for our constituency. I understand that, you know, they were misled when they bought their property forty years ago. You know, I understand, you know, and we're trying to do the right thing. And I think that today we brought it, you know, hereforth to, we can stop moving and move forward. Because we don't want to be in a situation where we have to throw and condemn people's homes, kick them out, you know. Uh, that's sad. How many homeless do we have? How many homeless people do we see? We don't want to add to it. And we certainly aren't that mean to, to, to do that. I think that this is, this is an action that we should all think about seriously and move forward. I mean, you know, it's not about people's homes, it's about their safety. It's about, you know, a dangerous situation. Every time it rains, you know, who's to say that maybe that lady or her children might not make it out of their homes? You know, it's a safety issue. It is dangerous. And that's why I brought it forth, because we need to act on this. And I'm pretty sure that our council, some of us, you know, agree, some of us disagree on this situation. Some of us want to handle it differently, but I think that we should have some empathy. We should consider the safety of our residents that live in that area.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mrs. Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez? Ivan Colombo Yalos?
Yes. Item number twelve, discussion and action for possible changes to the media policy. Mr. Rodriguez?
I was looking at the media policies from, um, from our surrounding neighbors, including El Paso. And there's nothing in that, in the, in the, um, media policy that states that, um, that we're going to infringe upon everybody's rights. I think that we've seen it in the past, that it's been abused. I think that, um, we should not be notified by media that we're having a press release or a press conference. I think that if we are going to move forward with a press release or a press conference, I believe that we should be notified as council and know what we're going to speak on behalf because I don't want anybody here to say, this is what the city does, because they're not speaking on my behalf if I don't agree on it. I think that if we don't, if we don't change it, I think that we should abolish that section. Or we should open it up to have everybody do their own press conferences if they choose, if there's something significant in their districts and also notify us of your intent and what you're going to say. Because the last thing we need is to be notified, the media saying that, oh, how, how do you know? It, it looks ridiculous when we answer the phone and don't know. I think that that's what we need to change. Also, I would like to add to the media policy because there is a section in El Paso that says that their commissioners are not able to talk to the media when it comes to stuff that happens in our commission. Uh, the reason why is because there was, uh, something floating around, and this is hearsay, that one of our commissioners, um, uh, divulged some information that was going around. Um, I did some calls, I, I did some digging, I found out that they did do the proper channels. But nevertheless, we should not let none of our commissioners, because they're commissioners, and we should just, um, if they have something to say, I think that they should let our administration know before they're able to say anything. So those are the two changes that I, I want to implement. Uh, if you decide to or not, it's up to you. I'm just saying is, one is we go ahead and do away with, with the, with, with it completely or we add everybody members that want to do a press release or a press conference for their designated areas, for their, you know, say you have a Kermez or say you have Buford on District Three, um, Pasmore on District Four, uh, Waco Tanks in different, uh, you know, in, in District Two. You know, I think that our commissioners should have the ability, I mean, our council, to have the same rights. I think that we shouldn't gag ourselves. I think that we should open it up and be equal. And if we move forward on that, that we should be able to let council know and say, this is what I'm going to say. So that we won't be blindsided. And that is my motion.
Mr. Yalos?
I, I'm going to second that and I just want to just really say that we should all be informed at all times, every single one of us. Nobody has absolute power and, and we should all be informed. I, I totally agree with you. I, I don't even know what you're talking about. I, I have no idea what you're talking about. I'm sorry.
Media called me, uh, just to make a long story short, I did not know.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, I didn't, thank you, Mayor, sorry. Um, I did not know and they asked me some questions. I was clueless and that's what it was. They asked, they also asked it, why are they being gagged, um, and stuff like that. So the media was like saying, hey, we, why can't we, why do we have to give you the questions prior to? Oh, because if you don't, this is what I was told. Well, if we don't, we're not going to be able to ask any questions. So that's why I went. That's the only reason why, because we should not, this, this is media. It's the freedom of the press. They should have every right to ask any question. You know, I don't think that-
I'm sorry, and our current policy says that they have to give questions-
No, and none of our policy says that. So they, they had a concern, they called me, that's what it was. I mean, I'm not, like I said, yes, they called me. I'm not saying that I'm the best person in the council, no. It's just that, you know, sometimes some of us are furrier than others, sometimes they're easier to get along, sometimes some of us are knowledgeable than others, that's why.
And, and I'll, I'll, uh, let you know that I did get a phone call on my phone and they didn't leave a message and I did call back and it was a news media and I, I said, uh, who's calling me? The receptionist did not know who I was, I mean, what I needed or who called me and that they'd call me back. And I said, if you need anything, I, I gave Mr. Rietta's number, that's who you need to talk, contact. If they did or didn't, I have no idea, just so you know. But this happened in the last seven or eight days, so I don't know what you're talking about until right now. Um, so.
Mr. Rietta?
Uh, all I wanted to add is that the reason that we provide questions to the media is because that's the way we can control the actual, we don't lose control of our conference or whatever it is that we're trying to do. That is the reason why we ask questions and that happens everywhere. You prep and that is the reason why we, we do what we do and, I mean, we can't identify every little thing, every little step that Mr. Rietta's going to do. But I mean, he has a degree in media and, and that's the way we tailor it. Politically, I, I just don't know. I mean, I think this gives us a little bit of more guidance of how to deal with the politics of it. But once you all determine that, then staff will take care of how we, uh, control the story.
Mr. Duran?
I do think that, uh, all of us do need to be notified when there is going to be a press conference. Uh, but also, I also think that a lot of times when the press does ask us questions, uh, we're not prepared to answer and the answers that probably are given can be taken the wrong way. That's why I think if, uh, I, I think all of us should be, have, in fact, I think we do have access to Mr. Rietta. If we want something to get out, we can contact him and he will set up a press conference. I don't think that there's, uh, we've not, I don't think there's anything in the policy that says that we cannot get with Mr. Rietta, who is our, um, media person. If we can get with him and, and do our, I, I don't see that. What I do see is the wrong message getting out when we don't, are not prepared, when the press just comes at us with a lot of questions. Sometimes the wrong thing does come out or misconception. This way, we're prepared for it. If we have, like I said, we do have press releases, let's get with Mr. Rietta. It just takes a little bit of, if I want to say something to him or I want something to get out, just notify all of us. It's real simple. That way, nobody is blindsided by anything and, but I do think that we do need to have a little teeth to our, our, our media policy. If you violate it, we should have, so there's a letter of reprimand. That way, when election time comes, you're going to be held responsible. We have rules and I think we should follow them. All of us should follow them. And the rule is, you know, if we, if we break the rules and hey, you know, here it is written, you broke the rule, you know, deal with it when the time comes. But I think those are the only two changes we need to make to our, our media policy because, uh, Mr. Rietta is doing a, a very good job. Um, he gets out the right message and, and I think the only changes we need are notification and something to say, hey, you know, you're not following the rules that we have set up and that's it.
Mrs. Yalos?
Thank you for that, Mr. Duran. Uh, you know, we just changed this policy and we're tweaking it and we're going to fall into, um, situations where they're uncomfortable, but we will get it right as a council. So I'm, I'm glad to hear both of you agree and, you know, I completely agree and I hope my other, uh, three, uh, members of council up here agree that, uh, we probably do need to, uh, ask Mr. Rietta, is it, is that the way it's going to work, Mrs. Dor, Dorarte? That Mr. Rietta will notify everybody?
Correct. I mean, if we put it in a policy, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
Right now, it's only, we, we channel the information through mayor, right? Because as a council, we should be delivering the same message as a city.
And can you elaborate?
Yeah, but where does it say that? I mean, I know it says it in our policy, that's what we're going to change.
Yes, can you elaborate why mayor, just-
Well, no, because it's just in your policy that that's how it channels.
This policy that we recently changed?
Correct.
Got it, okay. So we're tweaking it, like I said, and it'll eventually will work out?
And, and as, as more information and more direction that we can, as staff, receive to make sure that we follow and nobody feels like we're jumping them or that we're trying to ignore. Um, so if, if you can provide us clear direction, I mean, we can definitely work with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Um, I think that the penalties are, are fine for employees because when you are contracted or hi, well, hired by an organization, uh, you are, you, you are, you really don't have freedom of speech because you have, uh, you have decided to work for that company or that organization knowing what the rules are. That's, that's separate and apart from what we're doing here. Um, I think that, um, and just a perfect example, whether you like it or not, MSNBC or CNN, they always, they always, uh, interview individuals, especially now with the Republicans and Democrats on, on extreme sites. You're always, they're always interviewing congressmen or senators with dissenting views. And that's okay. I think that if, if we, if we are interviewed and we're asked, well, why did you vote this way? Why did you vote against it? There's nothing wrong in stating why you voted against it because ultimately that, you, I mean, you have that platform. I, I mean, that, I, I don't work for the city. I am an elected official and I think that I have the, the wherewithal to be able to answer questions as to why I voted the way I voted. That's one example. Two, I'm never going to put myself, I mean, someone to try never to put myself in a situation where I'm going to be in, be blindsided by a question. If I don't know the answer, I don't know the answer. And now that's at the point where I'll refer to the city staff so that they can, they have more of the, of the details. That's one thing, that's another thing. But ultimately, um, I think it rests on all of us to have the decorum, to be able to conduct ourselves correctly out in public. I'm not going to say anything that's going to disparage the city. If there is a dissenting vote that I cast, I can articulate it, but certainly not in a situation where I'm going to, uh, oh, well, it's, it's Mr. Duran's fault or it's Mr. Rodriguez's fault or bash them. No, I'm going to vote and this is the reason why I voted and that's it. I think that that's the standard that we should all hold ourselves to. And, um, and, and I've said it before, you've heard me say, the only ones we can control are ourselves. And so that's my commitment to this policy. I think it does need to be tweaked. Uh, whenever possible, the mayor should be the one at the forefront of, of the interviews, negative or positive. Uh, if things are happening in our areas relative to, like for example, Buford or, uh, Fiesta or whatever the, the case may be. I think that, um, it's good to have Victor there only because usually, more than likely, he's the one that arranged parts of, of that, uh, of that facility or, or that function. And so, or that he has information from other departments. So I think that, that we're, right now, we need to be cautious about, as they say in Spanish, there's some weird, ni muy muy, ni tantan, you know? Uh, and I think that that's where, and I think that we need to maybe even have a, um, a workshop to, to hash this out in, in more detail. I, I, and that way we can, you know, whether it's a Saturday meeting with Manuel and whenever. We can, we can sit down and actually hash this out because this, this is going to take more than this tonight to, to get this, what we need to, to get it. And so I propose, yeah, if you would amend your motion, to redo this but also have a working session so that we can iron it out.
I agree.
When would you like to set up the workshop?
Well, let's get a motion first.
No, I have the motion, so. You know, I li, I like, you know, I love the way you, you articulate and disseminate everything you say. But I was, yeah, you know, I'm speechless. Um, but one of the things that I will say is that, you know, we should not, because I feel that we're gagging ourselves. You know, I don't think that everything should run through the mayor because she's not my spokesperson. She doesn't speak for, for Nevadas or for Ralph, well, maybe for Ralph, but I don't think, sure not for you. And that's what I'm trying to tell you. And one of the things is that I will say is this, it doesn't matter. We all have a voice. We all have a voice. I will keep, continue to say it, just because something happens on, on Yalos's district, she's not going to have any say whatsoever. What if media doesn't want us, want to talk to, to myself or Mr. Nevadas and they want to go to you? Oh, no, we're going to push it to the mayor? No. You know, people need to understand what's going on to the district. People need to see the district representatives. There's a lot of wonderful things happening in this department. Nevadas should be in there too. You know, those are the things that we need to do. I know that, I understand that we're not going to hash it out on one meeting. I totally agree. We should move on and, and move to what we, we've amended, but also add a date, pick a date that we all could be there and just hash it out. So that we won't have to be going back and forth.
I think we're talking about two different things.
Mr. Perez?
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry. I think we're talking about two different things. One is, um, the decisions that we make as council. And so, and I think the most appropriate person would be the mayor because she is, she's the one that heads the, the, this body when decisions are made. Because she is, she's the one that heads the, the, this body, when decisions are made. If we have activities, or, or other things, I think that, um, I don't have a problem with, with you talking to the media, or somebody else. That's, that, to me, that's an issue. It's when we start bashing each other in the media, that is problematic. And I think that, instead of, I think that that's one of the code, uh, codes of ethical behavior, uh, in regards to media, that we can say, we, we will uphold the notion, or the belief, that we will not say negative things about each other, that are personal, whatever, or disparage. We will only talk about the, the topic at hand, something like that.
I've said it, sorry, Mayor.
Ms. Elavos?
I, I still think that all of us should be able to speak on, even on what we will vote up here, up here. I mean, mayor can be included, anybody of us can be included. But, you're right, it should be respectful. If we're going to show that we want to change Socorro, we have to change ourselves. And we have to show that, up, up here. I have seen other cities, uh, they do talk about, you know, the mayor this, or the mayor that, and, um, I have seen that. I have seen that, and it, uh, you know, it doesn't look good on any, we all lose, nobody wins. So if we could, uh, you know, if we still wanna speak on the matter, have Mr. Rietta in the middle of the whole, the whole situation, and, and any of us can speak. But yes, you know, something major, our spokesperson is the mayor, we understand that. And if she's not there, then it would be yourself, which is the next person in command, correct?
The next, few months anyway.
So.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And you know what, both of you are right, both of you are correct. This is the last time I'm gonna say yes, but it's gotta be said. Yes, I'm one of those, that if you did something wrong, I'll call you on it, yes. I have? You know, I have, I'm not gonna deny it. You know, but I mean, do, do I understand that we need to move past this? Yes, I also do believe this. Because it not only, if, if our members see that we're bashing ourselves, and they think that we're not cohesive unit, that we are not moving the city forward, and I understand that. Now that I'm hearing you guys, I understand, but I, my errors. Okay? I will tell you this, moving forward, I won't do that again. Okay? So I'm, I'm gonna amend my motion, so we can set up a date, what date would you guys want to do this, so we can change? And really, look at the media policy, and change it once and for all, so that everybody could be comfortable, everybody has a voice, everybody has a say, and everybody will know what we are doing, if anybody chooses to have a press conference.
Ms. Elavos?
And I wanna direct this to the mayor. Ms. Mayor, you are our mayor, as a constituent, you are my mayor. I live in the city of Socorro. And I just, I, I also, thank you, Renee, for sharing that you will change, but Ms. Mayor, I think you need to also, do a little changing, and, and, and realize that we all are looking at you to, to be our mayor. And the last thing we need is, is a mayor, mayors that we've had before, you need to be different now. And you need to show that you're here for the city, including, and for your council, and not just for particularly your, a group. So, now that we're putting everything out here, please be our mayor, and, and, um, and let's move the city forward. Thank you.
I would like.
Mr. Perez?
Here, we can choose a Friday?
That's fine.
That's even better.
Like, next Friday?
Everybody okay with that?
No, it's okay, I'll be here. We can do it Saturday, Friday, it's up to you all. I mean, this needs to get, happen.
That Saturday lingers, man, that Saturday lingers.
Only if you bring some breakfasts.
I mean, whatever day you guys want, just.
Just taking seven, at four? Or whatever time? I just happen to be off on Fridays, so.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, because, I'm, right now, I'm working until five thirty, that's why, and, and so, I, it's hard for me to come to. I understand you wanna do it at six, that's why.
Are you, are you guys okay with that?
Whatever time you can be here, because it's important that we're all here.
Friday.
Friday's good.
Friday's okay with me.
I can do early, not in the evening, four o'clock's fine, after eleven, I can't, not available that day.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with every, any day, any hour.
So Friday at four P.M.?
But Mr. Nevad-.
You can, Mr. Perez? Yes, 'cause he's off on Fridays, he's working, okay. So Friday at four?
Yes.
The twenty-seventh, yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Order number thirteen, discussion and action regarding reporting the results of an investigation into the conduct of the Socorro Police Department to appropriate law enforcement authorities.
Motion to approve the referral?
Second.
Could you?
For discussion.
For discussion, yeah, for discussion, Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, I, but, this isn't the agenda, but, uh, we just approved, I mean, possible, you know, relocation for our new city chief, and, I was gonna say to postpone this item until she comes on board, so that we can say, because one of the things that I'm, I'm, that I was wanting to address as, as well is, um, I know that we could push this through the sheriff's department, but we're our own police department as well. We could do the exact same thing, and push it forward by ourselves. I, I would like for, to let our new chief look at the situation, assess it, and then
Make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation, just for us, the city of Socorro, because we are our own police department, we can push it ourselves. If there is any, any findings of wrongdoing, like.
I don't have a, a problem with that.
So could you amend your motion for that?
So I'll go ahead and amend the motion to have the referral, uh, be determined, uh, the appropriateness of the referral be determined by, uh, the incoming chief of police, upon her review and her recommendation. Yes?
Still second. Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Nevadas?
Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Order number fourteen, discussion and action to remove Mayor Elia Garcia and appoint Representative Alarge René Rodríguez as a board member to the Transportation Policy Board of Apaso Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Mayor? Um, I brought this agenda item because, um, we, I saw an interview where it says that the possibility plus the, the letter that, uh, one of our commissioners sent, one of our board members from, uh, the TBB board sent as well, so, I mean, it's one of those that I, I believe that, uh, we need, um, to amend our bridges again, once again. Socorro fought for, uh, and rebuild our bridges. I think that, um, we need to do that again. Um, this is not a po- uh, power struggle, this is, this is something that even, even, you know, um, I've said it in council many times, is that I will always try to look for funding. Uh, we're tired of, you know, building our own projects by ourselves, we don't have the revenue for it, look at all the projects we've done. There's still those projects that, you know, uh, the extension of old Waco tanks to, uh, connecting Nevadas down in, uh, in, uh, Alameda, connecting it all the way down to Socorro and further on. There's other projects like the Tibo Boulevard, I mean, there's projects that we're trying to, to push, and this puts us in a spot where we have members of the TBB board saying that, uh, they agree with the commissioner that, uh, our funding is in jeopardy. I think that, you know, um, uh, even on the TBB board, uh, they're by law state that, uh, it's either mayor or a council representative. Um, the last time we did this issue, it was, you said that it was just for mayors, and I, I think that, um, you know, I think that it's more of the qualifications, uh, and, and I believe that we need to work and gain the trust back from TBB board members. I'm not saying that you're not able to, but I think that, uh, given the circumstances and the situation, I think that it would be best for the city of Socorro to have somebody back that not only will fight and try to get their trust back. And I think that that's why, this is why I brought it. I'm not here for a fight, I'm not here to, to say that, because this is an opportunity, I'm just saying, given the circumstances of the nature of us ju- losing grant money, uh, state money, um, this is, this is something that I, I believe strongly that has to be done. Uh, with that said, that's all I'm gonna say. That's all I'm gonna say. Um, you know, it's, 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 uh, that's it, if, if council doesn't want to, and believe that, you know, we should leave it like that, that's it, so I'll make the motion to uh, replace Maria, uh, Mayor Elia Garcia, and to replace her, uh, with myself, René Rodríguez, at the TBB board of the MPO. And that's my motion.
When I, um, first came on board as a councilwoman, I wanted to learn every department, every single department. And I did attend a meeting with the, um, MPO at our office, at our administrative office. I had a lot of questions that day, 'cause I was so new, and it was mind-boggling, everything, and, um, I remember speaking to the gentleman, and I, I can't remember his name, but he was a gentleman that came over, and one of the things that he did stress was relationship is very important. He, he was, he talked about how the MPO never wanted to work with the city of Socorro um, in the past. And that he was, uh, he gave a lot of kudos to our, our city manager, Ms. Rodarte, for changing the set, the mindset of the MPO. It's, it's very crucial that we have the right relationship with them. We're gonna end up losing a lot if we don't have the right relationship. And I remember our, the last time we talked about this was, Ms. Mayor, wait six months, learn the process, get their confidence, and then, we could revisit, and, and, um, and see where we were at with it. We can't afford to lose, um, their relationship or their respect, we've had it, we've, we've, we've come so far, Ms. Rodarte has done so much work, and I guess the past council, I'm not sure, Mr. Ro- Ro- Rodríguez, you were part of that. And so, I want to ask everybody today, this is not personal, against anybody, let's not lose this relationship. If, if they're already warning us, then we need to, we need to, um, listen to their warnings. I don't know if you wanna call it a warning, maybe that's a harsh word, but, um, that's all I have to say, I, I work for the city of Socorro, and not our egos.
Mr. Duran?
Uh, I've been to a couple of the MPO meetings. In fact, at one, we did get, uh, about an eighty thousand dollar bus for our public, or our, um, recreation department. And it was unanimous, there was no dissension. There was no, oh, well, we don't get along with Socorro, so we're gonna vote no, it was unanimous. Um, I think it would send a wrong, um, a wrong, uh, idea to the MPO that, oh, we're gonna change again, we're gonna change again. Uh, we need to, um, like you said, we need to come together. And we're not coming together. We're showing that, oh, it was, it was very obvious that Mr. Rodríguez was not happy with the change. Very obvious, everybody knows that. Um, and I think it's, i- i- it would send the wrong message if we keep changing. Uh, I have not heard anybody, and I've spoken to a lot of people, uh, at the MPO, and they, uh, nobody's told me that we're gonna lose anything. I'd like to know who is saying this, um, so we can bring it to the MPO. Say, why are you going to, uh, get rid of our funding? Uh, you said you talked to a gentleman, you don't know who it was, you don't remember his name.
Mrs. Rodarte, the gentleman that came to give, when I, if you remember, the gentleman that was there, I don't remember his name.
Ms. Villalobos, can I finish, please? Can I finish?
I'm sorry.
You know, I just.
I thought you were asking.
No, no, I just said, you didn't, I was making a statement, you don't remember. Uh, Mr., uh, okay, Mr. Rodríguez saying that people are saying, what people? We wanna know who's saying this, so we can go and talk to them, say, hey, we are committed to moving the city of Socorro forward. And the only way we're gonna do it is if we unite. And there, I mean, Mr. Rodríguez just showed it a few minutes ago. He made the erroneous comment that mayor speaks for me. Nobody speaks for me, I speak for myself. And that, to me, was just indicative of what is wrong with the city. Embidia, we have that, okay? We elected, all of us here were elected to serve our city. We, as a council, sent the mayor to be our representative on the MPO. And if there's gonna be a dissension, if you're gonna try to sabotage any kind of funding we have, then that's the wrong message. We need to unite, and say, hey, we're gonna do this together. If the people that are telling you that we're gonna lose funding, why don't you get a meeting with them with mayor? And say, hey, we're not the same Socorro that spoke to Ms. Villalobos, we're different. We're gonna unite, we're gonna work together, and we're gonna make this move forward. And I think a change right now will show that we're not working together. That we're not, you know, we're not a unified city. So I think, I don't think we should make any changes to this, we need to leave it as is. They need to work together to bring more funding to our city.
Mr. Rodríguez?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go back on my initial first statement, because I wasn't gonna leave it as that.
Would you allow me to speak first?
Yes.
Ms. Elavos?
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Duran, for bringing that up, and I will tell you, Ms. Mayor and Mr. Duran, both of you have treated me like crap. Both of you, and I've kept it to myself. I don't tell anybody except one person, and I needed to tell him because he asked me what was wrong. Both of you, I've tried to work with you, I've tried to be as courteous as possible, I don't roll my eyes, you both roll your eyes when I say something. So thank you for bringing that up, we need to work together. Today, it stops. I'm not here to be popular, I know I didn't help you with your campaign, I'm sorry. Mr. Duran has, it's that, he's at fault. He asked me if I had somebody, I went and found somebody, and I promised to help her, and I kept my word. I didn't think you were the w- wrong choice, I just had a commitment. And I need, need both of you to understand that. And you and I, Mr. Duran, said we would not go against each other, and you did, you attacked me personally, unjustly. And I, I, I kept it to myself, and, and it's not fair. And you, this is not personal, against you. Every time I come up here, I, I have to tell myself, remember, you're doing it for the citizens of Socorro. You, Mr. Duran, out of anybody in this world, knows why I ran. You're the one that brought me here, because I told you, I didn't like the, the way the city was running. I have no personal interest except to get the city going, I wanna be part of that, don't you? I know Mr. Mr. Nevadas does, he's talked about it. So please, don't lose the relationship, I fear that we could lose the relationship. We're not saying no forever, we're saying learn the process, be part of the, the team, because it goes beyond this. It's not, it's, 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 they don't, the county needs strong leaders, because it goes beyond this. The region, they have to look at the region, we have to be all strong, and I'm not saying the mayor is not strong. But you, you, you just can't learn this position overnight, or just because you were elected as mayor, and, and, and you have to learn the process, it's deep. And everybody needs to understand that, it's a long process, it's a lengthy process. I mean, I went to a couple of meetings, and my head almost exploded, I know I'm not stupid, but I, I knew this was way over my head, and I would never, I give you kudos, but I would never try to, uh, represent the city, not knowing, that's not the right way to go. Thank you.
And just to clarify, I wanted to say that Mr. Rodríguez is correct, there is a lot of changes coming up in the MPO, but to ease everybody, you know, I work very well together with Ms. Rodarte. And just to clarify, I wanted to say that Mr. Rodriguez is correct. There is a lot of changes coming up in the N P O, but to ease everybody, and I work very well together with Ms. Rodarte and with N P O staff. I have been attending every meeting, and I have been trying to stay on top of it to represent the city for the best.
Mr. Duran?
I don't get where you're saying I've attacked you. I remember, uh, we were in, in Walmart, and I gave you a lot of advice. And that really, you know, this is the problem with the ci- with the city. I've never attacked you. I've never said anything bad about you. And then for having, this is why we need to re-unite. We're not uniting. If we don't unite, well, then, you know, we're gonna be at the same. You know, we'll have one person that, that, that does everything for the city, and, and it'll always be the wrong thing. So, like I said, let's unite.
Thank you.
But let's put that in the past, whatever you think, 'cause you know I've been, I, I talked to you many times. And Mr. Rodriguez, let it go. I mean, uh, work with the mayor. If you know that much the, about who's trying to get rid of our funding, then work with her. That's all I, that's all I gotta say.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Peddes. Back in January, when we were having this discussion, what did you say? You said, sit with her, have a meeting with her, and you can pass all of your institutional knowledge. Is that correct? Those were your words. Okay. Ms. Rodarte, back in February, the, almost, it was March, I went into your office, 'cause I needed to talk to you about some, uh, other issues. Wasn't Mayor there? I sat down and I took the liberty and asked her in front of you, not only once, but twice. I said, Mayor, we need to work together. When do you have time? What do you need from me? And her answer was, I don't need nothing from you. Was that correct?
I mean, I don't recall me, but yes.
It was. Twice I asked her that question. Twice, Mr. Peddes. When am I gonna give her all the institutional knowledge if she doesn't give me the time or date? I have also told her in front of Ralph, that, hey, I'm gonna get the marriage together so you can do. She never has called me once. There's my phone right here. Look for it. You want this one too? Look for it. Zero. Let me tell you what's going on in the, in the T B V Board right now. You know that they were about to get slashed and not be able to have a seat in the N P O? How come we haven't heard this before? That's something that we should be well aware of. That we're gonna alternate every other year? So when we're not there, sitting there at the N P O, and our funding comes up, who's gonna fight for us? If we don't have a seat at the table? That is what's coming down the pipeline. It is imperative. It's imperative to make a change. I'm not saying that I'm the brightest and the smartest, but I've been here the longest. You've seen all of the stuff that we've brought through. You know, Mr. Peddes, because you're the second sitting member in council of everything we've gotten through the N P O. We don't have anything to show for it. We're barely letting this know why, when this is supposed to be known a month ago, that we need to prepare ourselves, that we might not have a seat there. You know, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm stepping away, because in the shadows, I'm still trying to find funding, like I did with the, 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 the money that we've got for the roundabouts. Okay? So I'm trying my best. I'm not saying, but I have more time to deal with this than anybody here. We've built the relationships that were crumbling. Now, do you really wanna name every single mayor and every single, uh, T B V Board for what? For retaliation, like Opação retaliated against us? Is that what we, that's what we wanna names for? I don't think so. But trust me when I tell you, you know, is there a rift? Yes. Am I the most qualified individual? Yes. But it's not a power grab. It's not about power. It's about what's best for our citizens. That's what it's about. I have stated here so many times. It's not about, yeah, I may be the loudest guy, the biggest guy. But it's never for me. It's because I know I can do a better job, and I know that we can do better with their help. We struggled when we got into the N P O at the beginning. We struggled to get, you know, projects done. And I'm afraid that it's gonna crumble, and we're gonna lose those. We got the Tigo Boulevard. We pushed the Tigo Boulevard, because it was in twenty forty-five. We pushed it down to twenty twenty-one. Because we were joined. We, as a community, as a T B Board, we worked together. We worked well. Now we have this. And a person who has bigger pool than anybody, than Socorro? You know, there's thirty members, thirty voting members. And if we can't get the majority of us on our side for all of these projects, and we already putting our backs on the walls, when they already sent us a letter saying that, you know, your funding might be in jeopardy, even though as light as the word it is, just the fact that we had a letter coming in should significantly say something. All I'm saying is, I made the motion. If you guys wanna make the change, make the change. If you guys don't, and you wanna keep it, keep it. All I'm saying is, you said, hey, work with us. Ralph, our District Two, is saying, oh, well, work with her. I tried. I tried. There's the stuff. She was there when I said, what do you want from me? To help you? Nothing. Twice. What else do you want? Do you want it to crumble and lose all these projects? Because that's what it's getting to. And you know what? I, I'm not having anything against it. I'm just saying that this is what's happening. You're looking at it. And we know, just like an iceberg, you see the surface, but you know that the bottom is what weighs in. We're just looking at the surface. It's exactly what it is. I am not fighting because I'm raped. Yes, I didn't like the situation, because I wasn't told. That's why. I said you should have extended it, common courtesy, and gave me a call. Yes, I had that conversation as well. But what I'm trying to say is that this isn't personal. We're talking about funding of our constituency. We don't have money in the budget. And we're gonna lose whatever projects we're building on. That's all I'm saying. And I'm done with this conversation. If you guys feel that we should leave it as is, I'm fine with it. Believe me, I will never bring that up. And I'm telling you right now, just like I just finished saying earlier, that I will hold my tongue and will not bash anybody, any of you, on media anymore. I'm telling you the same thing. Whatever's gonna be done, is gonna be done. That's it. That's, that's all I have to say. And that's gonna be the end of it.
I'm gonna second the motion.
Aye. Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Item number sixteen, discussion and action to approve Representative Alarge Rene Rodriguez and District Four Representative Ivan Colombia-Lobos to travel for T M L Economic Development Conference.
No, it's. You skip one, there.
Oh, sorry. Item number fifteen, discussion and action to approve Representative Alarge Rene Rodriguez and any other council member to travel for T M L Annual Conference and Exhibition in Fort Worth, Texas on October twelfth, two thousand eighteen.
I need a correction to that. It's the tenth through the twelfth. We forgot to add.
Ten through the twelfth.
Ten, it's not tenth through the, it's not the ninth?
Yeah.
Ten, ten through the twelfth. Because the first day is just the registration and, uh, where they're, everybody's setting up.
Okay.
So the sessions don't start till the tenth.
Okay. That'll work. Okay. Make the motion to approve with any of, any of the council members that want to.
To come back on the twelfth, correct?
And, yes.
Friday, yes.
Yes. I agree as well. So I made the motion and.
Yes.
Yes.
And the motion was the tenth through the twelfth?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number sixteen, discussion and action to approve Representative Alarge Rene Rodriguez and District Four Representative Ivan Colombia-Lobos to travel for T M L Economic Development Conference in Pastrop, Texas on November fifteenth through sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
May I just, do we need a motion first before?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve, and if anybody wants to tag along as well, I just put this because Ms. Villalos and myself, um, uh, wanted to, uh, because we're also doing our economic development plan, and if we need to tweak it and change it, then that's what we're gonna have to do, and this is something that T M L will show us.
Mr. Nevadas?
First of all, we don't tag along. And.
Thank you.
My questioning is why you and him?
I.
I mean, I know they just, you changed your comment right now, but I wanna see the reasoning behind this.
I'm gonna, I, I did see this, and I did approve it, but I figured I'd tell, I'd open it to everybody. I know Mr. Rodriguez, uh, knows that I'm passionate about economic development for the city. I think I've taken it on as a, as my baby, kind of. Uh, even though, um, Mr. Rodriguez, uh, always beats me to everything, but, um, that's the only reason. But I was going to extend it here. I was, it should always be extended to everybody.
Yeah, it should always. And it, and it, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
And you're correct. I won't do that again. Um, I should just open it up to everybody. Um, but one of the things, the only reason why I did was because I know that she also believes in this, you know, uh, a hundred percent. Um, and I just thought, okay, well, you know, I'll just put her on. But next time, when I bring an agenda item, I will no longer put an individual. I will open it up to everybody else. Just like I did in my comment. I said, hey, I will open it up to everybody else.
Mr. S.
Miss Villalos?
Mr. Nevadas, just so you know, um, when he sent the item, uh, and I seconded, I, I had not spoken to him about it. I didn't even know about it. I just seconded, and I thought, I'll bring it up. Okay?
I just see it as a would or wouldn't type of comment.
I got it.
Okay?
He's got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Peddes?
And I will eventually travel. I don't know when, but I'll eventually make a trip.
For what?
I'll eventually make a trip. I don't know when, but eventually. Just haven't been able to.
Second?
Aye.
No.
Yes. Uh, bring back information. Aye.
Yes. Do we have anything for executive session?
No, ma'am. Not for me.
Oh, uh, ma'am, sorry.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I don't know. We're posted for this? But Jim, send us a, send us an email, correct, Jim, today? On item seventeen?
Yes.
So we just disregard that, right? Correct?
I think we probably just post.
Okay, that, okay. That's all I wanna know.
Do you have a motion to delete item twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two?
Motion to delete the said items?
Second. Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.